I think I'll set it up for. Um, I think I'll set it up for.
I like this agenda.
Good evening. I'm excited to see everybody here and we are certainly excited about this process and excited to, looking forward to getting input and appreciate you being here. Tonight, I want to welcome everybody to the March fourteenth, two thousand and eleven work session. And a work session is a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there's only one agenda item. And public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. And before we open up, we, myself and our council here, as well as our staff, are proud to have employed Lou Oliver to work with us on this Crab Apple area. And I'll just briefly introduce Lou. He's a company of Whole Town Solutions. He's a town planner, urban and rural patterning and town implementation. Some of the projects that Lou has worked on that you may be familiar with is Vickery up in Forsyth County and also Saranby in South Forsyth, or South Fulton County, Chattahoochee Hills country. So again, we are proud to have Lou here and look forward to some of his ideas and concepts. And again, I also want to make sure that everybody knows that all your input is important and we look forward to getting that. So at this point, I'll let our city clerk call the official call the first item.
Our first item is opening presentation by Lou Oliver, Inc., Whole Town Solutions, to identify the long-term planning needs of the Crab Apple Crossroads Community and the City of Milton's future city center. We welcome Mr. Lou Oliver from Whole Town Solutions.
Well, thank you. You better hold your clapping to the end because you may not be happy. That's a joke. Well, I'm proud to be here. I lived in an area that later became Milton for about three or four years of my life, restored the oldest house in Milton, and know a lot of you and feel a special affinity for the area. Since I left this area some years ago, probably eight years ago, I moved down to Roswell. And there's only one place more difficult than Milton to do business or public work sessions, and it's Roswell. So, but you have a reputation for this and it's with good reason. You've got a lot to preserve here. So you fight hard and you're passionate about your town and your future town and it's totally in order to do that. We were contacted by the City of Milton to look at the Crab Apple area, to look at the assets and the problems, and really encapsulating it into one idea, really look at the quality of life in the Crab Apple area and actually how the quality of life can be improved. Well, it's impossible to do this without looking at the greater city of Milton. You've got a very large land area. You've got a population of over thirty thousand. I am told, in the best case, currently entitled legally, you can add five thousand houses. In the worst case, you can add ten thousand houses to the city of Milton. Well, this is what can be legally done and given the beauty of the area and the excellence of the demographic, the school system, I think we can expect that to happen within a generation. So we need to look at the bigger area and how it informs what we do in Crab Apple. There are many different possibilities that can come into play here, from the idea of looking at traffic from maybe the reverse of how we've always done it in metro Atlanta. We've always planned for cars here for the past fifty years. Cars have been at the top of the food chain. We can look at it a very different way. We can look at the pedestrian at the top of the food chain, bicycles under that, golf carts under that, cars, and then service vehicles. And from a quality of life standpoint, this is maybe something we should consider. We're not here to force an agenda on you. We're here more as facilitators and as people who can present you with several options, which we're going to be doing over the next few days. Our charrette, our stakeholder meetings are going to run this week, starting today, which we've had a number, tomorrow and Wednesday, and then Thursday, Friday, we are going to start some design work on three sketches. The sketches won't be conclusive. They're going to be presented again to you Monday at seven o'clock PM for your comment. They're sketches. I encourage you not to form consensus on anything until then because we want to really stay in a state of non-consensus until we see all of these options out on the table and then we can see which way the citizens and the elected officials are feeling might be the appropriate direction for us to take. At the top of the list is, aside from just general quality of life, a big issue that affects everybody and it's traffic. We have traffic problems here, very similar to what we have in Roswell. We've got enormous volumes and they're being funneled into very small bottlenecks. I'd like to say you won't have traffic problems, but that would be a lie. Your traffic problems will increase. They're going to increase. They're there. They're going to worsen as your population expands. There are two ways of dealing with it, though. One is road widening. Road widenings are slightly problematic because once you widen a road, you increase the viability of that route for more commuters, which you already have. Probably half of your road count is commuter traffic. So when you grease the wheels for commuters, so to speak, you can expect more to follow. We've seen this happen over and over again. The other thing you can do is you can create friction for commuter traffic and you can actually discourage it. If you do nothing, you're discouraging it already. The problem is providing traffic solutions for the local population and the community. So we're here to help discover some of those types of traffic systems we can do that promote community building, better quality of life, but maybe ease the congestion a little bit without wide, opening everything wide open for increased traffic volume from commuters. I'm going to open my slides now. I have a slideshow I hope I can keep up with on my iPad now because I've been through three meetings and my thoughts are all over the place. This is a slide that's illustrating the need to protect your natural assets. This is a pond over on Mayfield Road. And this is outlined in the comprehensive plan that natural assets need to be protected. This is your iconic corner store in downtown Crab Apple. This is heritage preservation, which you're doing a good job in some senses, but in other senses, we're losing history far too rapidly. This is a very unphotogenic shot of Crab Apple Road. Mostly, the weather is making it look not very good, but there's some obvious need for aesthetic improvement and traffic calming in this area. It does illustrate another point that we need to be utilizing existing infrastructure anytime we can, rather than trying to create new, because creating new amounts to more taxes. So we're going to be looking at reusing infrastructure to the largest amount possible. These are, these pictures illustrate the idea of developing some design standards, both rural and village. And this happens to be the old cotton gin, which is exceptionally well-done. And the design is based on simplicity and it's an, it's an architecture of, that is indigenous. I think a lot of what we've seen, which I think is regrettable in Crab Apple, is we've had a lot of imported architecture. It's not bad, but it is not necessarily native. And if it were more simple, it would be more about the area and less about somewhere else. These are some illustrations that show what you can do as a possible solution for Milton. This happens to be the Ball Ground Master Plan in the upper-left corner. Ball Ground has similar problems to Crab Apple. They're not as intense at this moment, but in the next two decades, they certainly will become that way. They have a historic downtown that's also a commuter route. They have sprawl suburban development at the edge. And they were very worried about their town being mowed down by the twenty-first century. And so we created a master plan that linked their parks and provided green streets, which are non-automobile streets, that for pedestrians, bicycles, horses, golf carts, this kind of thing. And so the dark green on the plan shows a whole system of green streets. Since we did this plan, Cherokee County has decided they will do a two-story school located right on the Green Street. This'll, this'll keep one thousand schoolchildren for probably fifty years from having to take the bus. Okay, so it's simple, stupid kind of planning. This is the idea of village nodes that can be located here. This is indigenous architecture. This, this architecture has some density to it. This is at twelve per acre. This is located in Saranby. It's single-family cottages. They're, they're almost off the power grid and so far, they're selling very well. But these, this is an idea for perhaps senior cottages that could be ideally located in Crab Apple, which we think is a missing type of housing here. This is some of the historic assets you have in Crab Apple. This is an example of infill that I would say is a, it's actually, I think, a good example of how you can infill and provide neighborhood services. Crab Apple, I think due to the economic collapse of real estate, the development was arrested and it's a node that really needs completion, a lot of people think. And it should be construed as a, as a complete neighborhood with neighborhood services, which is very different than a regional center. This is a town that many of you love, that is closest to here. If you took a poll between Roswell, Alpharetta, Milton, it might be the most popular. This is downtown Delonaga. It is, of course, tree-lined streets, a central park. From a land planning standpoint, dense as far as the retail footprint per the block. Now, the density has something that counterbalances. It's the open space that's continuous to it. So if you have densified areas, you want open spaces like town squares nearby. This is another one. This is Madison, which has a great historic district, very, very much the same character of Delonaga if you look at them from an aerial. This is an example of indigenous architecture. This happens to be in Madison, but you can find this all over North Georgia. It's not an import. It's done with simplicity and this kind of building can contribute to the making of a place that is all about Crab Apple. This is a, another detail. This is the Ball Ground detail, which you saw a little bit earlier. The historic downtown is to the right. The brown buildings are new infill buildings. The white, the white ones are existing. The big box retail, which is over in the far-left side, I think you see two rectangular brown boxes. Those are existing supermarkets and drugstores. And the parking lot can be infilled with traditional buildings that are built with a zero setback, wide sidewalks, street trees, and then the parking can be located behind. So this is an example that shows historic downtown repaired and actually retail big box repaired. And this is going to work beautifully. Incidentally, Ball Ground has already put in the infrastructure for the downtown, done a brick sidewalk, street trees, whatnot. So they're, they're on target. Again, this is another diagram of the Green Street system. The, the white lines in this are for cars and the dark green are for, are not for cars. They're for pedestrians, golf carts, bicycles, et cetera. This is another example of local architecture that is, there would not be a builder alive that could say that they can't build this because it's too expensive. And at the same time, most people would like this house because they see history and they see charm and character, but it's all about simplicity. It's not about wedding cake decoration. Again, in Delonaga, same thing. This is a, this is an indigenous house. This is on Canton Street in Roswell. Again, we see the need here for some infill housing that is available for older adults, for schoolteachers. And the problem right now is there's very little of this kind of housing stock in the areas that is for people of moderate means. This is the Mill Village in Roswell. This house was restored about ten years ago and the property was bought for nine thousand dollars at that time. And nowadays, this house would cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So simplicity does not have to be looked at as a commodity product. It has, has a value beyond what it appears. Small houses in Madison. This is a brand-new house, Nest at Saranby, thousand square feet. There's a misconception floating around that multifamily has to be loaded up with rickety bracken stuff to make it appear to be individual houses that are stuck together. And that's actually a very good, that's a very good misconception from the, from our time because we're so used to thinking of apartments and townhouses as something highly undesirable. And so to make them desirable, they have to look like individual houses in their own right. This is the Old Bricks in Roswell, which were restored, they were completed two years ago. This is actually two townhouses. They appear to be four, but they're really two. And these townhouses during the pre-crash were selling in the mid-sixes. And so again, this illustrates that the architecture of the area, whatever form it takes, can be about simplicity and about what would have been here. Another shot of the town square in Delonaga with the retail, the tree canopies, the brick sidewalks. Canton Street in Roswell, which, again, very highly desirable place. These buildings are directly on the street and in many cases, these porches or arcades cover the sidewalks. So it's a very intimate kind of streetscape that we think would be very appropriate for Crab Apple. This is a very large project I thought I would show you because this is similar to the land area left in Milton to develop. This, this project is six thousand acres. This is in Cherokee County and this plan was done for a private developer. When we did it, we were not sure if they were going to fire us halfway during the project or not because they set out as kind of wanting density spread across the entire six thousand acres. And we thought, well, let's do a scheme that shows it differently. And I'm bringing this to you as an option that will be up for, for discussion for the next ten days or so. This one constellates development on about twenty-five percent of the land and it saves the other land as active farms and forest, agricultural forestry and forest preserve. So it gives you natural areas and it gives you production areas in the country, as is typical of the countryside in Georgia. This one, this development also happens to be linked by Greenways or Green Streets. This is a detail of that, showing some of the town centers, some of the farms, some of the character of the residential areas, which tend to be very agrarian. This is a, this is actually a land use map of one of the village centers. So it's a very intimate kind of streetscape that we think would be very appropriate for Crab Apple. This is a very large project I thought I would show you because this is similar to the land area left in Milton to develop. This, this project is 6,000 acres. This is in Cherokee County, and this plan was done for a private developer. When we did it, we were not sure if they were going to fire us halfway during the project or not. Because they set out as kind of wanting density spread across the entire 6,000 acres. And we thought, well, let's do a scheme that shows it differently. And I'm bringing this to you as an option that, that will be up for the, for discussion for the next 10 days or so. This one constellates development on about 25% of the land, and it saves the other land as active farms and forest, agricultural forestry and forest preserve. So it gives you natural areas and it gives you production areas in the country, as is typical of the countryside in Georgia. This one, this development also happens to be linked by Greenways or Green Streets. This is a detail of that, showing some of the town centers, some of the farms, some of the character of the residential areas, which tend to be very agrarian. This is a, this is actually a land use map of one of the village centers, which in this case, we mix nearly every zoning classification in here. Because there's the idea of creating complete communities now, communities that you don't have to drive to Gwinnett County to work somewhere. You can, you have all the needs and employment base right in your community. And that idea is really taking off, I think, worldwide right now. This is, this is, this is a slide, and again, this is meant actually to provoke you a bit. Because the next few days, we're going to want to hear everything positive and negative about Milton, which is not going to be a problem. We will hear it. But I invite you to, to open up and tell us everything you can about Milton. Because the more we know, the better informed our plan can be. Again, if you look at traditional towns, and we have a, we have a slide of Charleston coming up. This is a typical development off of Highway 9, and this is in the city of Milton. This is about five units per acre. We have our required open space met. We have all of our regulations met. The density made it through because it's on Highway 9. But the entire development is totally cordaredized from the world. There's no interconnectiveness. It is mere housing-ness commodity. And there's a far richer way to do this. This is the same density in Charleston, South Carolina, which is an amazing place. Has tree-lined streets, the highest real estate values in the South, outside of South Florida. And an impeccable place. So when you're thinking about density, it, it's good to think the right kind of land plan with the density. You can't have high-density and awful land plans. You have to have density with excellent land plans and excellent execution. These are the Old Bricks in Roswell. Again, different kind of housing. This is an area that we decided to look at. This is Madison, Georgia. And we wanted to look at this from an aerial perspective. Because everybody we talked, talked to in Roswell is going to leave Roswell one day and retire in Madison. So it's like, why can't we have Madison? And what is it about Madison that's so great? And I, I expect a lot of you people would like also Madison as well, like I do. Madison has very little sprawl at the edge. You can clearly see on the left side, you have preserved countryside. And the countryside comes up to meet the town. And we decided we would look at Madison and explore what kind of densities Madison ha, has. We clearly have zero density on the left, but if you look at that little square there, which is a typical neighborhood in Madison, this is what, no, this, this is not what that square is. This is out of order. This is the town square in Madison. If you look at...
This spot, friends, this is the courthouse. And if you look at this spot, this is the retail area.
The retail area is built out at about 93% of the land area. That amount of coverage. No open area. Now, again, it is paired with the big open area of the courthouse screen. So it is density versus high-quality open space, and it's, and it's, and it's very A building in Madison. As you can see, it's, you know, for Madison, Georgia, it's high rent. This is Madison. This is the neighborhood that we were supposed to see three slides ago. This neighborhood is a traditional neighborhood. It's, it's gentrified. The homes have been restored, highly desirable. Again, evacuees from Atlanta moving here in droves. And this neighborhood is, John, help me here, this is a density of 2.7 per acre? I think it's 2.7 per acre. It's actually a lot lower than I thought it was. So this was an interesting slide. You've got this at 2.7, and then you have Charleston at about 5. And both of those neighborhoods feel good. Simple signage in Madison, nothing ornate, just completely appropriate and efficient to do. This is one of the assets of the neighborhood that you won't find in typical suburbia. Simple, simple, simple details. A barn in the backyard. A dollhouse in somebody's yard. You get mansions, churches, everything mixed up. This is another study. This is downtown Delonaga, which has almost the same land plan as Madison. And these are, these central squares were actually based on Savannah Square, which was an import from London after the Great Fire. So Delonaga has almost the same size square. This, this highlighted area in Delonaga is the retail block we're going to be looking at. Again, this retail block is very dense. This has a 91% build-out. But if you look opposite it, it has a massive open space called the town square, the courthouse. And this is beautifully tree-lined. They handle parking in a very good kind of way. They, they kind of made the parking beautiful and planned it as part of the public square. And it works very well. The retail thrives here. Courthouse. Simple details. Hardscape sidewalk. This is downtown Delonaga. This is, you know, the aerial, it actually doesn't make Delonaga appear to be very nice, but when you look at it actually in the ground, it's totally amazing. Okay, and back to our own time. This is part of the late 20th century cultural scene in Atlanta to group one income level into a large, large development and keep the evil outside world out with this fence. And, you know, some people may live in this, in this room, and I actually live in a house I don't care for right now. But it's, this kind of development can be so much nicer when it's really woven into a real-town plan. And if you have moderate-income housing, it's really great to mix it up with some, with some millionaire housing, housing, and some housing for seniors. And this is the way towns used to be. They used to be totally integrated and very complex. This unfortunately is a very typical scene in this part of the world, as is this. This is, this is part of northern Roswell, which is headed your way, incidentally. And it may not head this way very quickly. It may take a generation to get here, but some of the sprawl development that has started in Roswell and is now at the southern tip of Alpharetta is soon to be here. And so we have to look at it. It's coming. And what do we do to avert something that will be very negative? And, and that is something we'll be looking at. We don't have the answers tonight, but we're hoping to get input from you, from the city, city council, staff, et cetera. I brought the British over here last year and gave them a tour of the area, and they said, you have the most beautiful sprawl we've ever seen in the face of the planet. In England, they're just ugly roads with warehouses. Here, you decorated them up. This is, I'm very critical of Roswell because I live there. And city council probably does not like me very much in Roswell right now. But this is something that was approved about two years ago. And as you can see, the developer spent a lot of money on the facades, very well-intended. But it's nevertheless a shopping center which has very little to do with its neighborhood or walkability. These are some shots of some details that could have really been better done in Crab Apple. And it's the interface of, of the urbanism, the architecture, and some of the arterials. This is an example of, again, quality-wise, we like this project. Urbanistically, we don't like it at all. This is a senior living facility. And it has been, again, it has a cordaredized edge known as a parking lot. The seniors are 100% auto-dependent. They have no relation to the community. There is no social interaction with the community. And this could have been beautifully urbanized as, as a great building along the sidewalk. And it would have made for a much nicer life for the people that live here. Again, this is not in Crab Apple, but is very close by. And it's the rear end of the shopping center interfacing with the arterial, totally turning its back on the arterial. And this is failed, failed planning in Roswell. Really some, just some aesthetic problems. These buildings are, are, the quality is there, and the intention is there, but there might be another way of introducing an architecture that's more about the area, that's, that's a little less, that is more understated. The materials are a little more local. And if it were introduced, it could start to repair the fabric of Crab Apple. This is an unfortunate treatment of a rear alley, which is a very good, good device, but this has been executed in a highly mechanical way. Again, more, more fabric, which is what you need in Crab Apple, but the illustration here is maybe we should pull back and, and do something with simplicity. Everybody knows where this is. It's something we need, gasoline. We don't like the way it looks. It's on a prime corner. There are things that can be done about this in the future, though. A, the place could be redeveloped. B, the gas station can be moved to the street, and it can form a facade with the pumps back, back of the building. So there, there's even a future for gas stations, if you think they're going to be here in 20 years. This is a very nice house, but again, bad interface with, I think this is Mayfield Road. And it could have really been a charming village skate, and, and it became somebody's This is an example of what to do, in my opinion. Simplicity, conviction, totally appropriate to the area. Not gilded. This is actually a bad photo of something very good. And you, you almost need to see it in the field to appreciate it. But it's the gravel lot at, it's now a restaurant, I can't remember the name. Milton's. And the surface is very rural in character, and it feels good. It feels like a home place instead of a commercial parking lot. So I don't know what people think of this. They're going to be telling me more the next few days. But we think it's actually ve, a very good thing. A great little period house here that somebody has lovingly put money into. This is a, this is the back of a building in Roswell, which we like a lot. It's very indigenous, and it's, it's without pretension and full of charm. Another building in Roswell, which there's nothing gilded about this building. More details. Roswell Presbyterian, which is great. This is a house up in Holly Springs, which is a very modest design, but again, loaded with local character. Canton Street, Roswell. This is an indigenous house in Crab Apple that is regretfully in severe decline. A charming fabric building in Crab Apple that certainly is, is, it's the real McCoy, and it's beautiful. Same thing here. We have a lot of open space in Milton. This is going to be one of the issues that we talk about in the next few days. It'll be the hot button, which we want it to be. We want the problems to emerge now. We want everybody to say yes and no, all at the same time. Because we can pull out all the pros and cons at, at one time. If we wait to the end to pull out the, the negatives, then we have a land plan that doesn't have any kind of viability. So one issue is going to be the issue of, what do we do about the 6,000 acres here which are undeveloped? They're legally entitled to be developed into one-acre lots. If this happens, we will have 6,000 households or roughly 14,000 more residents at a multiplier effect by about 2.2 people per household. So we have population that is going to be here, like it or not. There are several strategies to deal with it. One, we don't do anything. We pretend it doesn't exist. Okay? Great option. I love that option. This is how I get through life. Two, we can say, we really want our countryside, really love our countryside, and we want to preserve wide swaths of it. Okay? That's a problem. But it's also an opportunity. Because there, there's something called transfer development rights, where you can have a sin zone, which would be maybe a pasture and some woodlands. Someone that owns that can sell the development rights. Let's say it's 100 acres, they would sell it for 100 development units. Those development units can go into a receive zone. Let's call it Highway 9 right now, where you want more density. You may want some of that in Crab Apple, you may want some of that on Arnold Mill. But it would be established receive zones that that density can go into. Usually, you have to incentivize that transaction. In other words, if you tell a developer, we don't want you doing one-acre lots and big houses in our horse country, you have to go to Highway 9. They're going to go, no way, Jose. Because my lots over in horse country are worth 150,000, and over on Highway 9, they're worth 5,000. So you have to provide a multiplier for that to happen. Worst case I've ever heard of is Montgomery County, Maryland, where they had to do multipliers of five to get redevelopment to happen. Now, the success story of Montgomery County is they saved 50,000 acres of open space. The best-case examples I can find of it are multipliers of two. You know, you get two houses over here for the one house you would have had in the country. But you will most certainly have to provide incentives for that to happen. I'm not telling you if that's a good or bad thing. I'm just telling you that is a reality that can occur. The other thing that can occur are conservation developments or conservation subdivisions, where you require Joe Developer to save this patch of woods or this little equestrian area, and you, he, he still has the 100 units. He has to just put them on half the land and save the other half of the land. That's another mechanism. The advantage of transfer developments is that, that open space can never be rezoned. It's permanent open space. In the case of conservation subdivision, there's some questions as to whether future generations can overturn the, the zoning and increase the density. So that is something we'll have to look at, talk to staff and council and legal about if, if we want to explore those kinds of possibilities. if we want to explore those kinds of possibilities. And we're here to help you explore them. This is the end of my talk now, and, again, we will be around. The charrette is public, and so you can stop by and look at the progress. Come to the sketch presentation on Monday, and we can vet a lot of issues and get a lot out on the table. And that's what this period is for, the next few days, is to really hear everybody's input, positive and negative, so that we can get some direction. Thank you. There are note cards. If, we're not going to do question and answer tonight, but if you can fill out a note card, if you have some comments tonight, we would love to look at them. And put down on there, if you're a resident, if you are a developer, if you have land interest in the area, it helps us go through things, because there's a fair position for everybody.
Lou, if you don't mind, too, would you go over the future meetings, the times?
Who has those? Does anybody have a copy of that?
Crab Apple. City of Milton. If people want to email comments.
Crab Apple.
Crab Apple. Not City of Milton.
Okay, so we have a Friday afternoon city staff update pinup at 4:00? At 4:00. So this will be kind of an internal staff charrette before the public sees it, so that they can say, "Lou and company, you've done something illegal here. Take it off before the public sees it."
Quick question. What is a charrette?
A charrette is a collective planning process, and it is, charrettes have become very popular the past 10 years, and they're probably the way to do a planning session now. The old world, we had great city planners, and then along came the 1940s, and engineers took over, and it became all about cars, and there was an agenda of just spreading the whole car culture. And about 20 years ago, a new movement took off called New Urbanism. Seaside, Florida was the first example of it. And Seaside was done with a charrette, and it is a planning process that involves expert plannings, and the public, and the elected officials. And it's a collective vision, and it's really the best way to do planning that I have ever seen.
Okay, and I believe, and our city manager just informed me that we've got a website, crabapple@cityof-
It's an email address.
Yeah, an email address. So if you guys want to submit something, any comments or questions, we can take a look at that.
Two more public meetings?
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure everybody knows, when the next-
It's Monday night at 7:00 PM. We follow some of your activity already.
Okay, that'll be here at 7:00 PM.
And there is a final presentation on the 11th, right? So we ask that. I'm not quite sure. So, 7:00.
If we can confirm that, but April 11th would be the final meeting. So I want to certainly encourage everyone here to attend and submit comments and thoughts that you have. Again, I want to thank Lou, and we look forward to seeing some more of your work. So thank you, everybody that came out tonight, and, again, want to ask you to stay involved, and please attend the next meetings, and let us have your comments.
And did staff go through and list all the meetings? Could everybody hear when those meetings were? And we're obviously going to publish those also on the website, or be on this email. And just, if you know people that care, please involve them. I mean, it needs to be about you guys and your input.
We'll definitely check the city's website. We'll have those on the city's website also.
And it seems like some people in the audience can't hear the comments. Did everybody hear the dates for the next meetings? And I'm seeing people saying no. Could just somebody from staff-
I'm allowed, Chris.
Hello, everybody. Oh, wow.
There we go.
All right, so after tonight, the next, what Lou said is the next public meeting, that there will actually be some sketches done, which is the one to come, and he used a term earlier today that I'm not going to use, but it basically was throw darts. Yes, it was, yeah, we're going to pin Lou up on the wall and throw darts at him and figure out how we can tear this thing apart. So that one is next Monday, a week from tonight, 7:00. We will be here for a council meeting at 6:00. It's a short agenda, so come join us for that if you'd like to, but 7:00. And then April 11th, I heard, will be the final presentation.
And I think we need to confirm that time, because we're sure if it's a seven-
It's a Monday as well, so let's say 7:00. That's an easy time to say, because we'll already be here. So for sake of consistency, let's do, a week from tonight, the 21st, 7:00, and the 11th. Gordon.
Could you restate the purpose of all this? Is this for the community to get in the input, or redesign a Crab Apple community? Is that basically what we're here for?
I think that's a good summarization of it, yes. We're interested in any and all comments at this point with how the community wants Crab Apple to develop. And basically, we have taken and thrown any preconceived notion out the window and said, "Gosh, we've got an opportunity to maybe look at this thing again. We've got great planners to help us do that." So, yes, any and all comments. The opportunity to provide comment tonight on paper format's great. We've established that email address, that if you just want to email us comments, and that will be what goes into that email address, and we'll publish that overnight. Again, that's crabapple@cityofmilton.g.us.
Do we have a question?
Do we have any other, I guess, kind of programmatic or operational questions? Yeah, Paul?
Chris, the stakeholder meetings are taking place at 11:00. Are they postponed?
They are not.
It's all public.
I can. There are some stakeholder, Lou, do you want to actually address what the purpose of your stakeholder meetings are? Let me get Lou to address the-
I think you have to postpone the meeting, because I don't think people will know that.
Gotcha.
Let's see, they're, I don't know if this is on, yeah, Tuesday, there's a 10:00 AM meeting of the business community, so we welcome them. 12:00 will be churches and schools. We have quite a school population here that we need, that is the asset and part of the problem that we're going to need to talk to. 2:00, we have Historic Preservation Commission. Wednesday, 10:00 AM, we have property owners. So if you're a private property owner in Crab Apple, we need your input. 12:00, our neighborhood associations in the Crab Apple area. 2:00, Wednesday the 16th, Parks and Rec Advisory Board. So hopefully, that covers everyone, and you are welcome to cross-pollinate and attend meetings that you don't belong in. That's totally fine. Yes, ma'am?
Do you see the state homeowners or what?
Property owners are 10:00 AM Wednesday morning, and then neighborhood groups would be at noon, 12:00 noon.
Okay. I believe we have one more question?
Sorry, I have to, I got one question. I couldn't see in the pictures, but we're communicating with Crab Apple. Would this be a community or would this be a place?
The, you know, you're going to have to help me, because I don't know what that is. Yeah, but if it is a historic building, we will certainly, yeah, we'll be looking at all of that. And we don't like to erase the past, that's for sure.
Besides the crossroads, what's considered being a boundary for Crab Apple?
We have, you know, the boundaries are, they're not, I don't have them in my photographic memory, but they include the school systems to the north, they include some of the neighborhoods to the northwest that are really already planned and entitled and going in or already there. They stretch to, there's a line that goes from the northwest corner down from the property that's already being developed, it goes down, and there's actually quite a lot of land in the southeast that is not developed, and there's some in the, also in the northeast. Those are up for definite discussion, and the whole thing is open to the discussion for repair and what to do about the traffic problems. That sounds very vague, and I know, but we have it on a map up here.
I bet so, it helps.
Well, we can't make those go away, is the problem.
I can.
And, yeah, I know the one you're talking about. They're a problem. And, again, we're working, we're going to be working with some realities that we can do absolutely nothing about, and unfortunately, they're everywhere. So how to de-emphasize them is the question, and there are ways of de-emphasizing them. If you can cut the view off from them, you can de-emphasize them. One more question? Somebody had their hand raised?
I've got a question.
Uh-oh, all of them.
Developing this plan, does all this follow the jurisdiction of Milton?
Does it follow the jurisdiction of Milton?
Follows the jurisdiction of Milton. Some of this not Alpharetta?
Okay, let me answer that question. There is a teeny parcel that is an island of Alpharetta in the plan. Okay? That's a problem, because from a planning standpoint, you want to be able to address it, because whether that remains in the hands of Alpharetta forever or not is a question. It may not. But what we like to do is, we want to plan it anyway, because really, who cares who owns it? It needs to be integral to the community. The public doesn't see the boundary, and neither does your dog. It's part of the community, and we will go ahead and plan it, and we actually have a variety of ways we can plan it. If we don't want Alpharetta to see it, we'll stick it in a file, but at least we'll have a plan of action if it ever comes available. Does that make sense, Sandy?
Yeah, I guess.
And we definitely want to tie into Roswell and Alpharetta as far as sidewalks, future greenways, and so we're going to be doing a lot of work to glean information as far as where they see future greenways, because if we can form a very connected web with them, it's only going to benefit us. Yes, sir?
So, Tuesday, Wednesday, there's a rec, or are those stakeholder groups?
Well, the stakeholder groups are part of the charrette process. Yeah, but we won't be designing until, like, Thursday and Friday. Sir?
Rec, well?
Well, this whole thing is really a charrette, including what we're doing now. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and where are they, you know, being moved to?
They're going to be held in this building at the other end. Yeah.
Is there a room in your current stakeholders' meetings for one more that, I look around this room, there's a lot of people I recognize, there are a lot of people, and people that I don't recognize, I'm guessing there are probably Greater Milton, as well as this stakeholder group, and as you and I talked earlier today, there is, this plan has an impact on Greater Milton's.
Sure.
Is there a room for another meeting?
You know, I would say, well, A, you can come to any meeting, but B, like, Wednesday morning, 10:00 AM, the property owners, that would be a good meeting to attend and hold up your hand and say, "I'm not in Crab Apple, but I'm from City of Milton, and we can hear the comments then." Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Lou, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Lou, just a quick question. I know that I've heard from some people that they did have the question about the daytime sessions, and just, obviously, a lot of people work, and so one question, maybe, and it's a tie into some of the questions I think that were posed. Would there be an opportunity on one of these days to have a later afternoon session? I'm just wondering, that there are people that wouldn't be able to make a daytime because of their work schedule.
I don't think that's a possibility. We've got a Monday at 7:00.
Julie, I think the Monday at 7:00 would work fine.
So you'll still have an opportunity at that point?
Yeah, because, you know, Monday at 7:00, we're presenting sketches. You're going to go, "Gosh, look at what they've done, my house is gone," or whatever. No, it's not that way at all. We're going to give you three, and we're going to try to do hardly any of that, believe me. But we're going to be giving you three sketches, and, you know, there are going to be people happy and mad and everything in between, and that would be the perfect time to come back, because, again, this is when we're collecting everybody's input, both positive and negative.
I just hear a big part of the message being that everybody is welcome to any meeting, that this is a transparent process.
Yeah, it's totally transparent.
Like I said, the mayor was also trying to emphasize, and hopefully, because I think some people have had a question about the timeframe, especially because it's such a quick process, and so I'm sure that our staff will make sure that we have all this stuff out with, including the stakeholder meetings on Monday, because I think those are some of the questions that I know I've heard, and some questions here in the audience, is just to make sure that people are at least informed, since tomorrow's Tuesday and Wednesday's only two days away.
Yeah, and developers are welcome in any of these meetings. I mean, the bad developer out there that everybody's going to throw apples at, or rotten tomatoes. Developers are responsible for some of the worst stuff in Atlanta, but they also developed Newtown and Edinburgh, which is one of the best cities in the world, and they largely developed part of downtown Savannah. So developers can be our friends or our enemies. We just have to corral them into the straight and narrow here.
And I think there was, yeah, maybe one more question, and then I know, Lou, you've got a ton of them. And I just want to stress the fact, this, you know, this is not a plan on what the council wants, or what the city staff, this is a plan that, you know, we want everybody's buying. So this is, we hope to come up with a plan that's based collectively on everybody's input. So one more question, and then-
Just a quick, the gentleman in the back mentioned a stakeholder. What does that represent?
That just simply means if you are someone who has input with respect to an interest group, for the most part. If you're in a church, and you want greater pedestrian connectivity, you're going to be a stakeholder, and you're entitled to express that in that meeting. That would be an appropriate meeting.
No, typically, you know, a property owner that's, you know, has a stake in that property or a business, or, you know, homeowner or something.
And citizens are stakeholders. This is your community. So you can all probably put yourself in one group or another that would be defined as a stakeholder. You just have different interests, but the key is to make sure that all of those interests are represented from one end of that spectrum to the other. Input matters. We can only get the best plan possible if everybody participates.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be a collective vision. Really, this place is going to be dependent on the most excellent plan we can absolutely fabricate, and a great collective vision, that's the best plan you can have.
Again, I want to thank Lou, and one last point, you know, I picked up on, and probably most of you, as Lou had mentioned, you know, the next generation, the next 10 years, there's going to be, there's 6,000 available new homes out there legally, and this is a great time for us to take a look at that and be able to control or help mold that, you know, what our city becomes, rather than just letting it happen by itself. So, thank you very much. Thank you for everybody that came tonight, too.